Would you please join us for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to introduce all the way from the west side of the county, the centennial elevator, we have Boston Crim and Nancy Buck.
The chart can change if I could, please. The last month you appointed a special question committee, I'd like to add that up under, I'm thinking under administration, human resources, one or two, to report, and then ask the Boston committee where you want to put this. About me, but at least be an action item as a board reporter.
I'd like to put it before the policies.
Thank you.
Move to approve will be amended. Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve and do a discussion. For a call vote please. Ms. Lansley?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Miss Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Move to approve would change.
Second.
Motion to approve, do a discussion. For a call vote please. Ms. Lansley?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Chadwick?
Yes.
Miss Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment on extra items. Thank you, Ms. Adams. And some recognitions.
Back here, we have several recognitions. I would like to recognize the Discovery School for being recognized as the school for food to families, food drive. So, Ms. Jordan, would you like to come up? Out of, I have my notes here, out of the schools. Is out of 30 schools across Tennessee with a total of 19,635 students across Tennessee, resulting in 205,000 meals provided. For the second harvest debate, the Discovery School came in first this year. For our board. That's a great accomplishment. Dayton Bates, if you will come up, this is special for me because Dayton's mother was my eighth grader. And Dayton represented Creekwood High School and won the bronze medal for the Special Olympics. Dr. Johnson, would you like to come up and be in a picture with me and Dayton? And we're so excited. We have three bus drivers. Ms. Melissa, would you come up? Mr. Rex, Mr. Dennis, and Mr. Bayden, would you come forward, please? Melissa, talk about this accomplished family, and we're so proud of each other.
Yes, we are, and we're glad to have you. They went through 25 hours of training, about two months of studying, and a whole lot of tests to give yourself. Very proud of you, got your board.
And then throughout this week, we have recognized veterans past and present. And I want to recognize one of our very own in the office, Ray Lookhaw. Right, thank you for being a veteran, come on out. And then, as many of you know, we will be saying farewell to Ms. Jan Ford out at White Bluff Middle School. 30 years in the district, Ms. Jan is moving to Lebanon. And there, she is not retiring. She accepted a position to be her secondary principal with the Wilson County School District. But she is moving close to her children. And so, we are going to host a farewell ceremony for Ms. Jan in the White Bluff area at the middle school. We're inviting the community, each of you. We ask all schools to come. It is December the 4th from 3:30 to 9:00, and we wish her well. And so, Ms. Jan has done a great job for the district, and she spent 30 years here. And we want to let her know that we wish her well. So, December the 4th, and you will get a formal invite through email. Our student, four members are at Bayden at the Opryland Hotel. And so, they won't be with us tonight. They're probably the last thing on their mind. Yes.
Right next, we have, under section four, curriculum, the TESA plan.
Yes, we need to approve that. We discussed that at the planning session, and tonight, we just need to approve it.
Has anything changed since our planning session on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Move to approve. Second.
A motion to approve in a second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? For a call vote please. Ms. Lansley?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Miss Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, under finance, we have our monthly financial list for all firms.
Yes, ma'am. For that, we will look at our revenue expenditures, and then we are comparing this time last year to this time current. You can see that we have a drop in our revenue along with expenditures for the report current October. When we go down to revenues and property tax, you will also see a slight decrease. Expenditures with utilities, they're up a little bit. Diesel fuel down, and jack-o'-lanes down. In the one forty, one time, are there any questions? One forty-two. One thirty-three. And the one seventy-seven.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. Do we have any other questions? For a call vote please. Ms. Lansley?
Yes.
Ms. Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Miss Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Next, we have approval of the FJAC Incorporated.
And I have Mr. Ray, if you want to come forward to kind of talk about his sentence.
Yes, this is a stipulation for our criminal justice. I brought Mr. John Patterson to the fraction, y'all may know him, he's our senior criminal justice instructor, you know, the detective for years, my friend's boy, I worked with. Anyway, this is something we've been looking at. We need something for our criminal justice, this is a virtual reality type thing, different scenarios. I'm gonna let John talk about it.
Right, this is just another tool that'll expose our students to some of the things that law enforcement does. Firearms training is an important part of law enforcement. This gives them a way to experience some of the things that law enforcement might experience, whether it be a real life scenario or just training, excuse me, with targets. But it's just like any of the other tools we have, we have a patrol car for traffic stops, we have a dog that's sniffing drugs, we've got drones for search and rescue. And this is just another opportunity for our students to experience some of the things that law enforcement does. And this is off the ice.
This is for one school right now. I have money for the other schools, I really, my mind wants to see an observation, and then look at people, and see if they can really use it.
This is the only business we have, is?
We get it out, but there are many of these types, and there are these things, and different police around the country have different ones. I believe you had one up here last year, a situation, how much?
It was 75,000.
Yeah, it was 75,000. So, they go high, they go low. This one, we've looked at about two years now, and think this is the one that would probably be a good one.
And it comes from the grant money.
That's correct.
Any questions? Arthur?
So, he's going to Dixon High School?
Yes.
Is it a mobile thing, or was it once it's set up in there, it can't be moved?
No, it's mobile.
Okay, so, I mean, like you could move it back and forth, but is there another explanation as to why we have criminal justice?
Yes, and they, we have looked at that, that's criminal for Creekwood, and again, next year, we may go with that. I need to see it, I need to get people trained on it. Mr. Patterson is now the senior first. Mr. Patterson is now the senior person who's been in law enforcement before. That's kind of where I was going to go with that. The other thought was, we would like to maybe take it to our bigger middle schools, just to show them some stuff. But then, I got a little, you know, the world we live in, a little nervous about the act of weapons. It's virtual reality, but, you know, they're doing scenarios, and I don't know if middle schools ready for it. We'll have to see how that works.
All great, no?
All right. Most of it will.
Second one coming up. I've known Mr. Patterson, worked with him a few years, and I may embarrass him here for a minute, but what I know about him is he loves the kids, he loves the program, he loves his job. We're fortunate to have the CT program in Dixon, along with other CT programs. And if it's his recommendation that he needs that for the program, he's done a lot of good things for a lot of students. So, make my second on that recommendation.
Well, it looks like he's a veteran.
Absolutely.
I thought I was getting him.
I want to say something to you. You were featured on Channel 5 recently. And I can't tell you, you know, what really means a lot when students talk about you the way they spoke about you and what you do for them. So, you are an asset to Dixon County, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. I woke up that, I had no idea, I woke up that morning, and somebody said, "You're on the news." Well, I performed a job with a teacher on the air. I didn't do anything.
My birthday is in July, and I hope that you make relief for my birthday.
I got you.
Do we have any other questions?
Roll call vote, please. Ms. Lanley?
Yes.
Miss Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have under Vaynes, Free Design, Vaynes for Centennial.
Yes, and we also have Jeff Corleto here, if there's any conversations along with Mr. Little. So, if y'all want to come up, to the front, please.
Four members, thank the paper you have in front of you, we want to talk about the work that's going on. That's for the design and a budgetary number for the install of the HJAC equipment in the Centennial Elementary School, gymnasium, the cafeteria, and the serving room. Pull that system off of, of the waterloo, just to be a standalone system. Just need your blessing, or you won't be there. I'll try to answer any questions I can, but we'll be doing the design work on that if you have others.
I have a question, sir, about what's happening. I guess I'd like for us during this conversation to talk about where it's going to be paid from, since the resolution that was approved earlier under Section 2 does allow for the heating HVAC systems. So, perhaps not the design fee, but the cost of the actual... I'd like for us at least to have a discussion about where it's charged.
I think Ms. Valerie has a lot of noble line item, Dr. Sutherland, for design fees themselves. I recommend that capital outlay would cover that project.
That's what we discussed, so the capital outlay, line item, would cover design fees.
I don't know about design fees. It'll cover the cost of install. I don't know, can you take that, sir? I don't know.
That would be a question for Valerie. I would have to ask her, but I will write that down and present that to you and let everyone know what line item that would come from.
Are we saying that, I guess, I'm asking this question, are we, do we have a line item? Were we budgeted for design fees specifically for things like that? Is that what we're thinking?
Yes, I know. It just depends on what, you know, some things are unpredictable. That happens in what we are meeting across the district.
Is there, is there some reason that we are hesitating to charge it under the resolution? Because we could always go back and at a later time remove it from there and put it somewhere else, I would assume. I'm not saying that you cannot take it from the resolution if that's the bill of the board.
I need to pull the resolution up and read that. I don't know that that's included in the resolution.
It is included in the resolution.
You have, you have it with you? Can you share it with you?
Yes, well, Ms. Lanley sent me-
I'm gonna question you, I just want to make sure that's-
It would be in the motion that Steve made on that day. That would be in a July meeting.
Just to prevent the design.
And I'm pointing it up too, while you're looking, see if I can find it, but just try and get it done before you got done talking. I didn't make it.
Looking to see if you have a line item that's in service.
I think the resolution's a question.
I think it's July, doesn't sound right.
April 25th, 2024.
Ms. Lanley sent me the resolution back, all back.
I know it ended with leaving a kind of an open line after you got past the top three or four items, so-
Yes, and that's why I said Section 2, that's why I said Section 2 of that. I'm sorry, I can't-
And that's, I don't, I thought maybe you had a copy in front of you, so don't, don't go fishing for it. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. The, I'm gonna reach deep into resolution, was the sports complex, the CT building. Some middle school, make some middle school updates, and Mr. Parker, yeah, was also the big item.
I don't know there was a big item. The second section would come in if there was, I thought that if it was, if there was leftover, we can do, Bruce, and other things like that.
I think my concern is we spend it for, if we spend a million here, a million there, we wind up without the ability to do the bigger projects that were of a priority. That's the only point I wanted to make on that.
You definitely feel friendly.
It liked it when they were going to close it.
You had it to be.
I had it, really.
Yeah, I had it now. It took me a long time, but it's not even bad.
Under Section 2, it says, "Be it further resolved, that funds will be spent on miscellaneous general maintenance upgrades to include but not limited to the following," and gives that list.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, but, you know, just a little background on the resolution. The resolution, whenever it was first proposed, it had so many items on it that you could not complete them with the 15 million. And we prioritize that Section 1 as being the priority of that. So, that's my concern, is doing a Section 2 item before we finish the Section 1 items. It's been out of money to finish the Section 1 items. I think the design of it, and I think the ability to buy that, whether it be through capital outlay or even with some potential million money from the law this year, would definitely be a real possibility. I just hate to dedicate it to the resolution money at a vote and steer it there. And if we don't get it back, then we sidetrack one of the main priorities. So, the design's the first step, to know what we have to go to train commission, ask for through our reserve money. And without that information, they'll send us right back and say, "What kind of money, what do you need?" I think the design's the first step. Valerie here? I think the line item that we use to design stuff is, there is some money put in every year for those type items. I hesitate to call out the line item and get it wrong, but it's, we use the same line item when we did Vern, which was some other designs along the way.
So, with that contracted services, I'm not sure if that is a line item or not.
It's not contracted services, so.
Okay.
And I, I can look at this in the later. I wish I had, if none of us coming up, I'd be glad to draw from my calendar. Mr. Parker?
That would be six capital outline. And so, what is our total budget per capital outline for this year?
To my knowledge, that's $1 million, and I think it's 943,000.
And whatever you, you said before, did you not tell us there's two?
Of these?
Yes, sir.
There's actually three of these. And I know Mr. Parker had that question, moving forward, could there be savings on the other? I'll let Mr. Little speak to it. I think could possibly be a little bit of savings, the money spent running back and forth and having all the meetings and all that, but there could possibly be five, six, seven thousand dollar savings on the design of the others this way. If you want to do multiples together, then that would, that would be a game changer. But we don't have the money and capital to do three of those projects at this time. We would have the money to do more.
Ms. Steele? The capital outlay fund is on page 14. It's in the section 141, last page.
It was a million dollars we moved to it, because it was left zero, and the budget was originally designed. We moved a million back into it, or we did B.
Yes, and my concern is definitely not the design fees. My concern is, you know, we need to do this in more than one facility. And I'm not trying to take away from the top items of that resolution, but I do know if we don't repair the schools that we have, then we're going to be in worse shape. And so, I was only trying to look at this from the perspective of where, do we have some funds? And how can we afford to do this project and other projects that you're going to have that's going to come along during this school year?
The resolution was first done with the 15 million. The budget zeroed out, the capital outlay. And when we did, asked 15 million to be voted, we also moved a million back into the fund for that, because it was left zero because of, I think it was 17 million, everyone was spending it first on some of the repairs. And the board voted to prioritize those, knowing that we had a couple of large-ticket items. And the design of the high school's going to be a big factor. We're not going to be able to do everything on it. We knew what's going in. You could design that to be thirty million if you want to, you could be 20 million. But it never was meant to be just for the high school complex. The CT building was a big ticket that we've worked on for two years to get it funded out of that. And I think those big items were prioritized. We had a full list of items, and we separated those items, the board voted to separate them on purpose. And this type item would, you could use that money after the Phase 1 was done. But I think going to Phase 2 without doing Phase 1, we're kind of defeating our purpose of even having the resolution. Because it's kind of all encompassing.
It, you know, it does say at the top, but it says Section 2, it doesn't say Phase 1 and Phase 2. So, perhaps that was what was intended with the resolution, but that's not what the resolution says.
Obviously, my comments were they were, Phase, Section, whatever the word is. They were separated from one list to two for that reason, for prioritization. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in the second. Do we have any other questions or discussion? Mr. Parker?
One second, please.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Lanley?
Yes.
Miss Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Other questions in regards to any of the facilities?
So, we had a kickoff meeting today for the CTE facility, pre-construction meeting. First part of December, I think there'll be votes on the ground at Creekwood. I think Dr. Sutherland may pass along some news. We got some claims, and I think it'll be good first part of December. And I think she might share that with you later, just to let you know that meeting has started. Dr. Sutherland, you asked me to address the leaks at Creekwood. Here, we have addressed those. We found out about those, actually, our friend, Mr. LaCamp, called us last Thursday when he had his career day. And that's the first we learned of any leak on the gymnasium at Creekwood. It's possible, I got a little bit of water coming through, an air duct that, horizontal air duct going through the wall. Possible, we might have a little spot, probably not more than three or four foot long, that we could have something there. We do have some damage to the lower roof. Mr. Parker has contacted the contractors, that we coming back to fix that. We're pretty safe in that, I think. We're, I think we're still holding well over $100,000 of their money in retainage. So, they don't want to come fix it, we'll hire somebody else to fix it, so. They damaged the lower roof with maybe some ladders I set up.
So, the lower roof is not what we fixed, it's just from the access. It's not, I'm sorry, not new.
Any questions?
And next, we have new technology, affirmation of the energy policy.
Ms. Jan here, and Dr. Wednesday, we have brought this policy up at our planning. And so, do either of you want to share anything about this policy again?
Yeah, basically, we just think of a part of the policy, it's part of the new regulation that provides money for internet access and some internal connection of with IT.
And this was discussed in the planning session.
Mr. Parker?
Second.
Motion to approve in the second. Do we have any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Lanley?
Yes.
Miss Brogdon?
Yes.
Mr. Haylen?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Next, we have human resources.
Madam Chair, we will send the home resource report for November. We have one retirement at the end of the year. Ms. Margie Shelley, who teaches at Dixon County High School. And we are so appreciative of her 35 years of teaching in public education. So, we appreciate Ms. Margie. I know my daughter in county has her, and loved French. Then we have the resignation, Monday the 4th, for October. So, you can see those numbers there, and then to the right on the survey, the reasons for their resignations. Next, we have a Ms. Rowan Trigson. Yes, ma'am. The Alcoa, Contouria Contract Agreement is before you. And I have Troy here to talk about that. So Troy, would you like to have a talk to this?
Yeah, this was brought to my attention by the state. They're performing an audit on some things. And we were needing to have an agreement with VAALCO. VAALCO is a cooperative group. And I have Ms. Rhonda Lewis here with me. And she can answer any questions about what you may have. Because I do understand there's a, everybody may not understand how things work. But VAALCO is a cooperative group that helps in our buying power for items. And we're, they work from Dixon County schools. So that is, we needed an agreement to what we do and what we provide and what VAALCO as a group will reimburse us for and what is going on. So really, this is, the agreement that you're reading was the agreement that has been set up in the past. When I came in, this was the understanding. So Rhonda and I got together to make sure these are the understandings that us as Dixon County school system will provide and what is for. So I was going to open that up for questions. But also, Rhonda, is there anything you want to say in the forefront about the system? Again, she is, she is hired. She is the procurement coordinator for VAALCO, hired by VAALCO. Okay? And again, VAALCO is a group of thirty-nine districts of a school nutrition. We pay her salary and do things, the things that any other items that she needs now. And VAALCO reimburses us that time. But it just runs through our system so that VAALCO doesn't have a set of funds where they're sitting on. It just runs through us. And then we charge VAALCO every quarter and get reimbursed from that. Can you make that clear?
Yeah. So VAALCO is volunteer state cooperative. It's a nonprofit educational cooperative that was formed in nineteen ninety-eight. It's been approved by the Tennessee Department of Education and the State Attorney General when it was formed. There's only two co-ops in the state of Tennessee. It was originally formed with Dixon County as the host district in ninety-eight. It relocated a few times over the years and come back to Dixon County as a host district in two thousand seventeen, in the spring of two thousand seventeen. And that's when I come on. I was a member of VAALCO and an employee of another school district for seventeen years before coming into this position. And essentially, I complete all the procurements for all thirty-nine school districts. When I come in, there was only twelve districts, twelve district members, including Dixon. And since two thousand seventeen, we've had quite a significant increase. And so there's now thirty-nine school district members in the middle of West Tennessee. So I do all the procurement for new food and non-food purchases. So pretty much everything except for equipment. I also administer the commodities. I organize the meetings. We have probably ten to twelve commercial bids and dozen or one to two dozen commodity bids. It's a pretty significant amount of procurement that's done. There is a set of bylaws that we, that was, when it was founded, that we go by. Along with that, because we are a nonprofit, we don't make any money. We don't have any money. We don't charge the members any fee for being a member. They just have to agree to split any administrative fees. And then they pay for their own commodities that they receive. So essentially, one district member agrees to be the home district or the host district. And that's what this is. It's just Dixon County agreeing to be a host district. Essentially, you provide an office and office equipment. It still all belongs to Dixon County, nothing belongs to VAALCO. And then VAALCO is responsible for paying fees incurred, salary, any kind of benefits that goes along with it, travel. They also pay for postage, any paper products, office supplies that are disposable, that type of thing. VAALCO pays for that. There are some times that Dixon County Nutrition will initially pay for it, whether it's through a credit card or something. And then I go at the district, the district's pay me, and then I be in first for nutrition. So Dixon County isn't out any fees for posting us other than just providing an office. Is there any questions about that? And I do have files if you all are interested. It has a copy of the bylaws, the initial approval, the agreements. Are there any questions about this?
Have we signed this contract before and it just expired?
It was initially, I think, signed when it was, in nineteen ninety-eight.
Okay.
And then it relocated, the group relocated to Bedford County and then on to Fayetteville City. No, Stewart County, Fayetteville City, and it come back here. We think when it come back here in two thousand seventeen, it was agreed upon, but I don't think it was anything in writing. And if it was, we don't know where it's at.
How did the contract let them leave? What's the contract? I mean, what is this?
It's really.
This paper work to make the auditors happy.
Yeah, yeah. It's just paper work that says, yes, we allow you to be here. We're not moving out anyone for hosting you. You're responsible for, you know, for all the payment reimbursement.
Mr. Hall, look at this.
It's all been in place for years. And I recall approving the contract two thousand twelve, give or take a year. It was in place at that point in time and it moved at one point. Then it went to Stewart County. They were operating it then, far fewer counties than this. But it's basically, you know, we're saving us money. And I do recall us getting it back. But that was my question. It was just the contract had been in place. We just, it hadn't been updated in several years. It probably got set by the wayside and operating back for years.
And that was what the audit brought to our attention. And that's what brought it here.
Any other questions? So are you the coordinating district director?
Yes.
Does that come with any responsibility or is it just more?
No, it's just me.
It's a connection link?
That we hosted and everything runs through us. So that, you know, her salary and everything, we're paid. She is an employee of Dixon County. However, VAALCO is the one that pays it. So we're not out any money except for the thirty-nine percent, you know, the thirty, what our part is. Yes. Yeah, and that was brought to our attention. That was something that we inherited. I'll go ahead and address that. The cell phone reimbursement of fifty dollars a month was given to all school employees at the time of administrative positions as a reimbursement for their cell phones. And she was included on that. Since that time, I have emailed all of the, when Dr. Sutherland brought that to my attention, that that may be something that we'd want to share. I have emailed out to all the others and asked for that fifty dollars to be shared instead of us paying for it. So it is in the work to have that. Again, that's six hundred dollars a year. And for us, that's what we were paying. But I have asked all the others to share that, which in turn will be about sixteen dollars for the year for every district instead of us taking the charge. So we are working on that. And I will say this, that agreement, if I do get the change, if the other districts are okay with that, then that will change the cell phone part on that. But we needed this right now and it can get changed in the future. But I needed it now for our audit purposes to be approved. Yes, yes.
You have a motion?
I summon next motion to accept the current VAALCO merger.
I'll second. I have a motion in second. Do we have any other questions? Rock Hall, my please.
Ms. Langley? Yes. Ms. Brogdon? Yes. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Field? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have field trips. Four field trips or three field trips to the center out of town. One will be the wrestling tournament that is in Drummond Town, Tennessee, December the sixth and seventh. The two-way competition that has historically taken place February sixth through the tenth at Walt Disney World. And that, you will see all of the information there. Dixon County High School, Dixon County High School softball, travel to go ashore. This is something that they have historically done, March seventeenth through the nineteenth. Those are the three. And William James, Smoky Mountain Championship for Chairs of Louisville, December seventh. Any questions about field trips?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in second. Any other questions, discussion? Rock Hall, my please.
Ms. Langley? Yes. Ms. Brogdon? Yes. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Field? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Madam Chair, can you do the final minute right before we start these policies? There's about a few of them.
There's about a few of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
6.414, prediction three, seven, per year risk. Any questions about any of these policies or second reading? No changes from this one session.
Move to approve all policies of second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading. That was meeting policies, we have a second.
A second.
We have a motion in second. To approve on second reading, policy 1.102, 1.105, 1.200, 1.407, 1.501, 5.301, 6.4081, 6.414. Roll call votes please.
Ms. Langley, yes.
Ms. Brockman, yes. Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Steele? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Next, we have policies for first reading. Yes, policy 1.704, charter schools. Policy 1.901, charter school applications. Policy 1.905, charter school renewals. Policy 1.906, charter schools. Replication. Policy 1.8012, extended school day year programs and school age childcare. Policy 2.8051, debit cards, credit cards and credit lines. Policy 3.212, district water testing. And policy 4.700, testing programs. You have any questions, Ms. Steele?
On 1.8012, extended school days by year program, the school age childcare. On 1.8, it says the orange panel, any more of these comments with fees? And I was wondering there if we should put a month there? Because I would assume that it would be important to establish that before school begins. My second comment on that one was, I would appreciate getting a statement of revenues and expenditures for the prior year as well as this year. That's perhaps our planning session. But I did think it's important to put. I think a month would be appropriate there.
This is the board after school care, right? After school care.
And so, I'm assuming the additional revenue since Batista money nor our addition other funds, so you know, parents are having to pay for this service, so.
Yes, I would, I would like to seek Valerie's opinion as to what might be best. And I'll bring that to the planning session.
Okay, thank you. Yes, no worries. Well, I want to go back just to, yes, because we were going to ask Valerie, will we just insert that? Or, you know, based on, you know, how we were talking about if we like approved it on first reading tonight, then it causes that delay a month? Should we, how do, how's it best to handle this? Just let, I mean, I'm fine with any month, but I just, I think it's the financial part of it. So, how's the best way to handle that part, right?
You could add some policy to your first reading if preferred, if you'd like to. That's an option. If preferred is the right word, but you can, you don't have to pass all of them first reading. It will run out. It's happened before.
What, what does Valerie's opinion going to change?
Just a month, I'm going to add a month, a specific month. I mean, there may be a current month now, if they update rates they charge, there's probably, we just don't know what that month is.
I mean, I think, you know, it's great to get her opinion. I mean, as a board, I think when it's our decision and we think it through a little bit, I think it would probably be, you know, looking at our parents. I, I would be more apt to say it means to be more in the spring for the next year. And we need to have that, you know, I think we should be able to have that put together and, and not be a surprise in the school. And we can send that out to the current kids that are using before and after care and, or flyers or however we send it out for that. And everybody will know in the spring as, as we do have a lot of, I don't, I don't even know that we have to put a month on it. We have a lot of policies that we, we, we can say the word spring. And I mean, I think spring is from April to, I think of spring as April, but you know, it really, really goes all the way to June. I think that we can put something in there that give us a little window and that will give our finance department a little window. And we make sure that we get that done in the springtime prior to the start of next year, put out the year before if the rates are going to change. Just, just a thought. How you like the word spring, Ms. Steele?
As I've stated previously, Mr. Parker, I don't care about the month. I like, spring is fine with me.
How you like the word spring, Mr. Hall?
I'm fine with spring. March 21st. I'm wearing that window.
And I, I think we've got, we've got policies that, that are put, already have the word spring in there. And when you go back and you look at issues of that, you know, I think previous boards put that in there. And I like the way they did that because it does leave a, leaves a pretty good window, but it gets, it gets that information brought back to the prior year. People know that the cost would be going up. I doubt the cost would ever go down for anything, but prior year, they will know that the cost will be going up.
On 2.1, this is just a question, it's probably a Valerie question, but on 2.8051, I'm just wondering who actually pays the credit card bill? Is it the bookkeeper of the school that has the credit card? Or is it someone in, in Valerie's office, in Valerie's office? They, what happens is the bookkeeper sends POs to the finance department on the items that they would like to purchase. And then it goes through finance. But let's just say that it's a travel, for example. They're not going to have a PO. Travel would go through Don Martin and they would, but still here at the central office. Am I understanding this? Okay. That's just one more question.
Mr. Hall, were you open with all of the charter school policies?
Yes.
You have any other questions? We have a motion to approve on first reading with the changes. Policy 1.8012, we've agreed with the word please.
So move.
Second?
So.
And a motion in second to approve, policy 1.704, 1.901, 1.905, 1.906, 1.8012, we can change to add spring, 2.8051, 3.212, 4.700, first reading. Roll call votes please. Ms. Langley?
Yes.
Ms. Brockman?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Steele? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Next, we have comments by DCA.
I always like to want to thank the board and especially the special committee.
Can you put back the microphone so everybody can hear you?
Oh, well, I never need the microphone, so I'm just louder. Here's my teacher voice. I want to thank the special coaching committee and I especially, I want to thank the board. I look forward, we look forward to our collaborative abilities moving forward and doing what's best for teachers and students. And we are just really excited to work together. I wanted to bring your attention to some awesome things going on in our county. Tonight, tomorrow night, Saturday and Sunday, the Dixon Middle School is hosting Percy Jackson and the Lightning队. So come on out and watch these wonderful actors. One of them is my child. Come on out and watch these wonderful kids perform. It will definitely lift your spirits. The Discovery School is hosting their literacy night, Monday the 25th from 6 to 8. So definitely want to get involved in that. It's Christmas time and DCA always does an adoption of angels at NHC. Of course, children always get adopted this time of year, but sometimes our, our shut-ins get overlooked. So we always adopt about 15 angels, people who don't have families. And we always ask the schools to participate in that fundraiser to help us get, we try to get everything that these people ask for. One year, there was a lady who wanted a stuffed dog like she had when she was a girl. And we were very fortunate because we have some great Amazon shoppers. And we found an identical puppy, stuffed dog, to what she had when she was a child. So we're just really fortunate to do that fundraiser. And we hope all the schools will get involved in that. At the state level, SB 1 and House Bill 1, which would include the voucher program, the fundraiser, or not the fundraiser, the scholarship program is, is rolling out. And so TA, DCA, we are definitely going to be up on Capitol Hill lobbying for, on behalf of public schools. So just wanted you to know that that's what's happening local and in the state. And we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Director of record. I hope that you noticed the jerseys before us. And so before I get into that, if you look on the scroll screen, we are rolling out the Learning Lab Mentors for the 24, 25 school year. I do have a little booklet that has their pictures and bios that you can look at. I will lay it here for after the meeting. But I would like to share with you who these teachers are that were selected to have open classrooms where teachers can go and learn from their practices. They had to meet a certain criterion to be a part of this. We had a group that helped select them. At the board. And you will see we have Taylor Gailworth, Dixon County High School, Julie Granbo, Ron Stewart Lawrence Elementary School, Patrick Payson, Charlotte Middle School, Ashley Quatzer, William James Middle School, Olivia Reth, Dixon Elementary School, Ben Rosa, who's in rest by nine, Charlotte Elementary School, Ashley Sanders, Centennial, Luke Schindler, Dixon Middle School, Marley Decker, Creekwood High School, and Sloan Williams, Van Lear Elementary School. And so we are tickled that these teachers who have shown great success in classrooms have applied for this role. They will make a sign event to open up their classrooms for teachers to visit. I could take the governor into their rooms, anyone from the State Department. You and I could go into their rooms and watch them teach. They know that this is open. They can help teachers, they can answer questions around planning, how they segregate their data, just best practices. They will answer emails for teachers if they have questions, take phone calls. So this is our inaugural group. They are running, you see the pictures on the screen of these pictures. We will get feedback from them so that we will take this to the next level next year. And we hope to even add positions across this district. So this is an opportunity to collaborate together with colleagues from across the district.
Are there any questions in regards to the Learning Lab Mentors?
Mr. Dyson?
Well, it will range, it will not exceed over 3,000, but it's around, I think, 2,400 for this year because we're getting started a little bit later than what we had originally thought.
Other questions?
If you would like to go in to any of their classrooms, you can get with Ms. Dill and Dr. Marvin. And they will be available to go with you. I think you will be very impressed with these, with this list. And it's about learning. It's not just learning from teacher to teacher, but from directors. We're learning from them as to what we would want to replicate for this district. And so it's a learning process both vertically and horizontally. We just appreciate them. This takes a lot of courage to say, hey, I want to fill out this application. I welcome anyone into my classroom. I would like to share with them some of the best practices that I have learned over the years from mentors that taught me and that I've shown through data, through student achievement that I've been successful using these practices. So we're very grateful. I'm honored. I was honored to even send out the email to them to let them know that they were chosen. But do you remember Dr. Marvin and Ms. Fortner, how many we had? Dr. Winstead? That we had to apply?
About 30.
Okay. So we think a great time this year. And so again, we want to survey because this is the inaugural group. It's not at its simpler level. This is another opportunity for teacher growth. And they will make it, we'll continue to pull our team together to look at what we've seen in surveys and make it even better each year. So, probably. Now, to what is in the ring before me. Joey has been very instrumental in helping move this movement. One of the things that I have alluded to when I started and sat in the seat was I wanted girls' flag football. And so we are going to make it a reality in Dixon County. These are the uniforms, so Joey.
Okay, I think you know the passion that she's had with flying football and wanting to get this going. I won't go over that point. We had a special night planned tonight. We were going to have them all here, but Beta Club, basketball, life kicked in and no one could be here. We even had, and they didn't even know it, these ladies were going to do cartwheels. They didn't know that, but they were lined up and ready to do some cartwheels and do the cheer part.
Big reveal.
Yes, big reveal. But nevertheless, we have created a video. And I'm going to give you a heads up. It might be really loud. It might not be loud at all. We tried it this afternoon, it worked well, but we all know about technology. The goalpost, we're going to try to keep it local with the uniforms. Goalpost printed all of these jerseys up. And I think the only difference, the Cougars might have to be orange because when they go play other teams, there's only going to be one jersey, it won't be a home and away. So everyone in our district, in high school, no one's orange, so their jersey. This is a good market, but the rest of them will be what it is. And then the middle schools, obviously, you know, there's 165 schools, I think roughly, high schools that are participating in girls' flag football. And we'll be one of those zero that's participating in middle school. And you know that her goal was to be the first in the middle schools. So all four of our middle schools will be basically just playing each other. And it, it should be fun. So I, I can't say a whole lot about my video skills. We'll just see and, and cross our fingers. So Scott, if you'll cut it on, we'll see how.
Nothing to prove, there's nothing better than a challenge. Girls' flag football coming to a city near you.
Are you ready for some flag football?
Can you feel it coming in the air tonight?
Scott, I'm sensing the CMS flag football.
Come on Tigers, let's play some flag football.
Jasmine Wims is Burns Middle School.
Hey Bobcats, let's get ready for some football.
I'm Claire Ellis from Dixon Middle School.
Hey Dragon Nation, let's bring that relentless spirit to some flag football. Let's roll Dragons.
Lacey Scott, William James Middle School, flag football.
Let's go Purnals.
Kendall Bryant.
Sadie Parker.
Lily Killabrew.
And we're from Creekwood High School. And it's a great day to be a Red Hawk.
Lily Pierce, the Dixon County High School, Discovery School alumni.
McKelby Cannon, the Dixon County High School.
Arundu, the Dixon County High School.
Thank you, Joey, for your work on that. Appreciate that.
We've been busy.
Apparently Sadie wants to play, huh?
When you came into the building tonight, you saw the visitor code of conduct. This is what they look like and will be posted around our schools. I will pass that out in various locations. I just have to pass this around. We had our first parent united way, two-year meeting. When was that? I think it was Wednesday, maybe Tuesday. Was it Tuesday? Tuesday. And we had 15 families participate. And we want to give a big shout out for Melissa Sutherland, Jamie Petten, Lynn Harder, Beverly Widener and Annie McKannon for always going the extra mile. You know, I'll, you'll hear me talk about people that are superiors and these are people that go the extra mile. I really appreciate even our directors that sit before me, that have been a lot of hours, but they're there because they want parents to know that they care. If we're asking you to come, we want to try to be there for you. I do not ask them to be at everything because they have families of their own. But I just appreciate what they do above and beyond what their roles, what their roles are. And I really appreciate that. The topic was fluency and how they can do fluency checks at home. So really showing parents what that should look like. Early Army Family Workshop, Andrea Boeben did a wonderful job. I know that Ms. Sherry Field attended, Ms. Robin Lately attended that evening. We do have directors with young children that are of that age. And so Dr. Field, I mean, yeah, Dr. Field and Dr. Marvin attended. And just appreciative of that. And we are very appreciative of the work that you're doing Andrea in creating that focus that what you do at home with children that are not even ones matters. It matters. It matters before they step into the garden. And so we want to make sure that we are helping parents get there. Directors conversation occurred at the Vid Center. I appreciate Ms. Steele for being there and being supportive. The topic was safety, social, emotional learning and school health. I would like to thank Joey Holly, Crystal Vanderpool, Troy Williams, Carrie Goodman and Tisha Tomlinson, or Tasha, however she pronounced her name, for just supporting me in that. We would love to have more parents come out. But it's an opportunity to meet with me, ask me questions and to learn about our system. And so we did have seven represented with us. And we want to continue to grow that opportunity. And so I'm constantly looking for, how do we get that message out? I've got some ideas, so stay tuned. Our next one is in February at the, in Charlotte, at the Collier House. So we'll look forward to that. And it is running on our website. We celebrated Veterans Day across this district. I had the opportunity along with Dr. Winstead. We went to the Dixon Middle School Veterans Day program and it was wonderful. Ms. Harrison does a really good job at that. And she had a couple of veterans that came out for this program and we got to meet all of them. And so I'm proud of the work they do and across this district in honoring those current and past. Thank you for all those that helped to deliver reward case. We had Chairman Sonia Brockman and Ms. Steele, thank you for helping with that. We're glad that you're feeling better, Mr. Chadwick. And we look forward to you helping us next year with that. Dixon County had the expo at Creekwood, right? You and your team did an excellent job in that. It was well-attended, the kids liked it. We took some good pictures, I think very informative. And so good stuff happening. The Galls Summit, Dr. Winstead and I went with Mr. Hall at Montgomeryville Monday. Very informative, learned a few things. Principals meeting, we had a Thanksgiving luncheon together. It was sponsored by Christ Our Bank and we are forever grateful for them supporting Dixon County schools. It was a great meeting. We are talking just about how we get better each and every day. We had a director's meeting. In this director's meeting, we really spoke about, and I firmly believe it because it comes with belief first. If you believe it, you'll accomplish it. We looked at, we, our wildly important goal. And the wildly important goal for Dixon County is to be represented in the top 10. And I have asked every director to write a wig. And we're going to talk about what is their wig for their department. And we're going to get there. It's going to take a minute, but we're going to get there. And so I really believe, it's just not me that believes it, I think this team believes that we can get there as well. We've got to fine tune the work. And I have challenged the principals that that's where we want to be. And so they're the boots on the ground and we need to support them in any ways that they need to be supported, teachers need to be supported. And that's one reason for this group of educators, the Learning Lab Mentors. That's part of the group that's going to help us with professional growth. That's part of the group that's going to help us, um, with professional growth. Then, um, we have a group, our HR department and finance department have been at Casmo this week in Franklin. So, busy times, uh, but a lot of learnings taking place, a lot of good things happening in our schools. Uh, each of you have been shared calendars of events that are taking place, not only athletics, but fine arts and events and we hope to see you out there and we appreciate your support as a board.
Questions? Are there questions for me? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Actually, I have comments by board members. Any comments?
I appreciate the card from everybody. It's the latest technology. It's low cost, only about an inch long, it's lining right in the heart. I mean, it's in there.
And it's working, right?
Working.
We're glad you're feeling better.
I want to, uh, make a change on our next planning session and move it to the board office here instead of this new entry, just so we will have the technology since we're going to be getting education on the other side. Y'all behind me, I change.
Still, well, dinner at five. Um, training begins at six. And I appreciate all the hard work y'all put in every day. I need the energy that Dr. Sutherland must have because... No, they inspire all of us. They have some energy now. I've got to look up with my teeth. We appreciate all the hard work, yeah.
So, I watch these pictures go across the screen and didn't know what they were for and, you know, it's, it crosses my mind, just that goes on every day when we come here and I believe this before, but these people that, that work that we don't see every day, you know, they put their life into this, not just the ones that we see here, but the ones that we don't see here. Yeah, I think it's just important to stop and look at vastness of what goes into the school system, whether it's the bus driver, whether it's riding down the 48th of the day in Saul, Sonny and I were working on a wireline in one of the schools, you know, and kind of digging a hole after hours. You know, those things that we don't see every day, you know, even to our teachers and Mr. Rosen, I kept him on sale him out, his dapper beard that, that he snuck in and grew in last year since I first met him when the picture was, looked like that. But, you know, these people, they put a lot into our system, uh, along with our director and we've worked with Mr. Hall pretty good too. But you'll get a stand-up prop of you with glasses with a football, stand up, you walk in the building, it'd be great. Stop and think about these people that, that we don't think about sometimes, or sometimes, I think it goes a long way.